Item five A consent for extension of provisional appointment of Thomas Wolfe as Chief of Police. Presenter is Human Resources Manager Charlotte Nelson.
Good evening, Council. So, as you know, we have a provisional chief and are looking at going out to the outside to get applicants. So, we need to get an extension for, or we're requesting an extension for provisional chief Tom Wolfe, or until we can complete the recruitment process.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Nelson. And does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? And if you would like to comment, you could hit the star nine if you're calling in on your telephone or by using the raise hand function in the Zoom meeting. We've got a few hands up here. Let's go with Mr. Joseph Riddell first.
I think you, Council, this is Joseph again. I was just wanting to say that I agree with the last person who spoke. Mr. Wolfe should receive continued extension until we furthermore handle the outsourced search for a proper candidate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Riddell. Next, we'll go with Mr. Darryl Riley.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'd like to just comment as a concern citizen about the extension and about this whole situation. Because I just happen to have the privilege of being at the last study session. So, I was able to actually hear what the council's opinions on this situation is. And I'd just like to say that, first of all, Tom Wolfe deserves to be the Chief of Police. We tried that already going outside with a fire, looking for a fire department chief. And that costs a whole lot of money, you know, and then if we find somebody, we gotta pay to bring him here and their family. And there's nobody jumping at the bit to come to Bremerton. And if we find up enough money to bring someone here, they're probably gonna only be here for a couple of years. Because that's how those situations usually work. I think as far as the racial S, the racial equity aspect of it, from the perspective of a black man who is also a convicted felon, I speak from a lens which you all may be blind to. And I think that it's unfortunate that we have to find all of these excuses instead of just doing the right thing. This man has given over thirty years of his life to the Bremerton Police Department. And it's very well deserving. We have no excuses or reasons why we keep pushing this down the ball. The same thing is probably one of the reasons our last chief left. And I just think it's unfortunate that we have to throw all these things in front of this situation when we can create and continue on some continuity. And furthermore, as a relation to the idea from others that it might be a possibility or might be a good idea to look at a person of color to lead the Bremerton Police Office, you know, the Bremerton Police Department, I'm not in favor of that. And I don't think that's fair to ask a person of color to come into a community with a mostly all white police force thinking he's gonna get something done. That's not gonna work out like that. And you're fooling yourselves if you think it is the case. So, I just think we should find a way, you know, you know, some things are just the right thing to do. You know, and I don't think the perspective of the citizens was taken into account. Nobody asked us. I think you guys are making a decision to kick this down the road. And the way this thing is looking, some, if not most of you, won't even be here next year. So, where do we go then? I just think it's totally unfair. It'll be a waste of money when we already got the best person here who already knows the community, already has a good morale within his department, and is well respected by all of us. So, I just wanted to say my piece and thank you for taking the time to listen.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Next, we'll go to, please state your name for the record, Lorai G.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we could hear you. You're a little quiet, though.
Okay, I'll raise my voice a little. It's in regards to actually what Mr. Riley is saying. You know, I, there's actually been no less than about five calls to the council in terms of this exact appointment. And I feel like that we have, there's been a group of us that have been ignored. The letters that were written in regards to Chief Wolfe are, represent a wide variety of the city and the people that are in the city. We, what is very interesting to me is that the first meeting that I saw and listened to, it was all about you wanted that Chief Wolfe quote was qualified, more than qualified, very qualified. But you wanted diversity. My concern is that this council screams for diversity, yet it is a mostly white male council. And you don't seem to even listen to the two women of the council or even the one person that's a woman and of color. And I'm just wondering why you want to do the search, spend, I think the fire chief was thirty-five thousand dollars, when you already stated you had somebody that was more than qualified. It seems like it's a waste of our money. And I'm just trying to figure out why that is. Under the new House bill that was passed under law enforcement, we're gonna lose law enforcement officers. We are at a really critical situation in Washington, and I don't think you all realize that. And I don't feel like the city council really wants to give the city police department, that's actually one of the best police departments I've ever seen, any kind of stability. I think that Bremerton can be a great place to work, but they also have to have a council that's gonna get behind them. And that's including not that giving them the stability. I know officers have called in and said, have what they wanted, and I feel like that they've been ignored. And as citizens, we're really concerned. I don't really feel like it's a time to play who has the biggest ego or who has the biggest, you know what? It's time to be collaborative and it's time to put the citizens first. And I hope that this time I'm heard.
And could you please state your name for the record as well?
It's Lorai Giotti.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll go to Mr. Kia Hau Long.
So, I'd like to say that I respect Mr. Riley and the last person that called, Ms. Giotti. I hope I said that right. I respect the process of Mr. Wolfe and whoever is appointed. I would just like to follow up and say, after looking at Sheriff Geese's command structure, we seriously need a command structure that represents a diverse community. I know I speak up constantly for diversity, and I know there's certain people that are of diverse ethnicities. And specifically, Mr. Riley, I totally understand where you're coming from. I'm a person of color. I'm mixed European, white, and I'm Pacific Islander and Asian. But the things that have affected my community, the hate, the whole vitriol, the whole COVID, the whole Chinese flu. I'm Chinese and American, so I constantly see the hate. I've experienced it. I've friends constantly going to Seattle, going to DC. I mean, I know you probably went there yourself, but I guess what I'm getting at is there's a lot of change that needs to be done. And I'm not trying to vilify any of the police officers or even the sheriff department. I know I touch basis on a lot of these issues that affect people of color in our community, but we seriously need diversity. We see, we need to see it. And no matter which way Bremerton Police or how it goes with the council, and I appreciate the council members, all of them, specifically President Gorman and Vice President Dogs, and you know, even Councilmember Simpson, he's from law enforcement. So, I mean, right there, I appreciate the whole process. I just would like to see diversity in the command structure, hopefully in the future. Just not only representing what we look like of people of color at the lateral positions, but it's important to see that we have the opportunity to be considered part of the command structure. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Long. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? And if you would, hit the star nine on your telephone or raise hand function in the Zoom meeting, and I'll recognize Melissa Watkins.
Thank you, President Gorman. I wanted to just speak on behalf of my own experience and my experience in speaking with my neighbors about the interest in not necessarily finding or replacing the Chief of Police, but addressing a process that is more equitable and acknowledging that we, as a community, can do and gain a lot from a process which is transparent and engages with community so that we can all be a part of the process and understanding and building that relationship with the person who is in that position. And ultimately, I think then that could lead to stronger equity, regardless of the outcome and who ends up in that seat. I think the process itself is something that we should be focused on. And I appreciate the city council and mayor for stepping up to come to an agreement on allowing that process to be open and transparent. That's everything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Ms. Anna Mokler?
Thank you, President Gorman. I thought what Mr. Riley said was really stunning because, and it sort of dovetails with what I was speaking about before, which is that we missed an opportunity to interact with the Bremerton Police Department to make it more reflective of and of Bremerton and more intelligible to ordinary people, more a part of our daily lives. And coming in to run a department that is, you know, to be a black man running a mostly white department, would I imagine be tough. And I think that Mr. Riley makes a really good point. I personally like Mr. Wolfe. He speaks in plain language, and that's always a pleasure. He's a solid person, and so far as I can tell, he's told the facts every time he spoke. I would move to have him simply be appointed chief myself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mokler. Does any other member of the public wish to comment?
With the extension of the provisional appointment of Chief of Police Thomas Wolfe until the city is able to run an external recruitment and make a regular appointment.
All right. Councilmember Simpson?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so we're open for discussion. First, we'll go to Councilmember Sullivan, followed by Councilmember Simpson.
I will hold until Councilmember Dowes speaks. I'll come back later. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Simpson?
Thank you, Council President. The department needs to have a chief, and this is the process that we need to go through. And we need to, we have an interim candidate, and I think that this is a, this is a good move. Thank you.
All right. And just to remind, oh, actually, we'll get to Vice President Dowes. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Gorman. I wanted to make a motion, I want to move to substitute the pending motion. If that's possible, I would like to move to approve the extension of the provisional appointment of Chief of Police Thomas Wolfe and request the mayor make the regular appointment of Thomas Wolfe as Chief of Police.
All right. And Ms. Hoover, did you collect all that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Councilmember Sullivan seconded. All right. So, now we're open for discussion on this item that was just stated by Vice President Dowes. And I'd extend, Vice President Dowes, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Gorman. So, I made the substitute pending motion because I knew this was gonna come back to the table, and I knew this discussion was gonna be in front of us again. So, I did my homework. I've listened to our citizens. I've reached out to our community. But I've also talked to about a dozen of our police officers within the Bremerton Police Department. And a lot of them have shared that they're concerned about bringing a new police chief, let's say from Texas, with our new recent state law mandates regarding our police departments. If someone was to come from Texas, doesn't know these state law mandates, this could be an issue for our department. And so, right now, with all these state law mandates, I know a lot of our police in our department is, has an uneasy feeling. And that's because of these mandates, and it's new as of July twenty-fifth, right? And so, they want consistency. They want someone that's been there from the beginning. They want someone who knows of these state laws, and Chief Wolfe is that person. The other thing is, is, you know, I'm a firm believer, if it's not broken, why change it? And if we need to bring in a hiring firm, then we do it when the department's not doing well. But we are, I feel we have a department that's doing very well. They are great with our community. I've listened to our community speak like Darryl Riley and Kia and Mokler and Ms. G. of Bonnie, Vonty. Sorry, I messed that up. But as a person of color and a chair of the racial equity advisory committee, I think the last thing we need to do in the city is get a token person of color. We don't need a police chief. I'm a firm believer in diversity, and I'm a firm believer in the hiring process and opening up. And I've even talked to lieutenants and captains, and he do not want to apply for this particular job at this moment because of these new state law mandates. But being a person of color, a chair of racial equity advisory committee, I'm a wholeheartedly a person of color and diversity needs to be in our city employees. But currently, right now, with our police chief, I think the last thing we need to do is disrupt our department any further. Being an interim police chief, there is minimal stuff that our police can do. He can't appoint, he can't promote. He can do, he can promote, but on a temporary basis while he's an interim. So, a lot of the things is stifled when he's an interim. And when he's a chief, he could do the things that he needs to do to move his department forward and continue to do great things for the city of Bremerton. So, I made this motion because I feel, and I, and again, I can't tell the mayor who to appoint, but I'm putting in this motion to request that we make that appointment with Chief Wolfe just because I knew it was gonna be a hard topic to decide, but I didn't just talk to our citizens. I went to our department and talked to them as well. And so, I'm going with what's best for our city. Our job as councilmembers is to represent our constituents and what's works and what's best for the city. And I think Chief Wolfe would be and do great things for our city and continue to move us forward. So, that is my reason. Oh, and then the other thing I wanted to mention is that we did do a hiring process for our fire chief. And just to let you know, we had seven candidates, thirty-five thousand dollars we spent in the city of Bremerton, and they were all seven white males. And in the end, we ended up getting Chief McGanney. So, we did a hiring process. We did open it up to others to apply. And in the end, we ended up getting the same person that's in office right now that would, I mean, the same person that was working for our department. And again, they were all seven white males. So, thank you for letting me speak on this, and I hope I can have council support moving this forward. Thank you, President Gorman.
All right. Next, we'll go with Councilmember Sullivan. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, President, thank you, President Gorman. So, I've spoke when it came up before the study session in favor of appointing interim Chief Wolfe to Chief Wolfe. I had read every letter that came in, and at that point, we had one dissenting letter. He's supported by the community and the officers of our department. And I believe right now, in this time of upheaval for our entire country, that the continuity and interim Chief Wolfe is the candidate for the position. I firmly believe that he brings forth all the qualities that we need in the leader to bring, take us forward into the future that is uncertain with all of the new regulations and legislature that's gone through. And I am, I mentioned in the study session, I was biased, but I want to, I want to clarify what I'm biased about. And I wish to thank the public that has come forth because I fully agree. And I apologize because her name is not showing to me. I'm, when I say I'm biased, I'm biased about our police department. Our police department is, I believe, one of the best in the area, and if not the best in the area. And I believe that interim Chief Wolfe is the person who will continue to keep us the best in the area and move us forward in the future. So, thank you for giving me a few moments to say my piece there. And I am in support of Councilmember, Vice President Dowes' motion to request the mayor to appoint interim Chief Wolfe, Chief Wolfe. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll go to Councilmember Dennehy.
Thank you, Council President. You know, the issues surrounding Black Lives Matter and the mass incarceration that is a control on people of color in this country run very deep. And where the rubber hits the road is through police discretion and prosecutorial discretion. Whoever sets the tone for a police department in being able to discern and make decisions about who is arrested, what areas of a community are policed, what crimes are actually being pursued, and what information is given to a prosecutor, along with the relationship between the investigative unit and the procedural unit, the police and the prosecutor, is very, very, very important. We have a, what I believe is the number one concern in the United States right now, where we have a population of six percent African-American, and they overrepresent the prison population by fifty percent. So, when we have an opportunity to actually have a process where somebody who's going to be leading, who's going to be giving informal as well as formal direction to those people who are making decisions every single day, I do think that it would be worth the forty thousand dollars or the fifty thousand dollars to have a citizen committee, to have more people involved than just the mayor, asking questions, getting people on the record. What, you know, I completely agree with Vice President Dowes and Mr. Riley. We do, the last thing we need is a tokenized person of color leading the police force that's set up to fail, that does not know the community, that has mistrust among the officers. That's not good for the community. That's not good for that tokenized person. That's not good for the police force. What I do believe is that we should have a more transparent process for a position that has so much import, that is paid with taxpayer money, that has a little bit more transparency and accountability than, well, this person is loyal or this person was handpicked. That's my opposition. That has always been my opposition. It's with the process. And I think going on in the future, the process should be more transparent and make sure that if we are getting a police officer who is white, test their understanding of racial equity, ask questions about their understanding of policing in America and how it is basically created to oppress people of color and how that has transformed over the decades. That being said, I did get responses from, and I sat down with community members, those on the racial equity committee, including Mr. Riley, other folks as well as captains, and Mr. Wolfe does have the support of the community. He does have the support of the police department. He does have the support of captains and the management of the, I'm sorry, the leaders of the management guild on the police force have assured us that nobody else wanted to apply for this job. So, I am going to support the motion of Vice President Dowes. And I do support Tom Wolfe to this position as he answered my questions about, you know, qualified immunity and whether or not people in uniforms should be prosecuted for unjustified killings. And his answers were acceptable to me. And he's now on the record, and we're gonna hold him accountable if something like that happens in our community, that we now have him on the record saying that he would support prosecution of somebody unjustifiably killing a citizen. So, I want to support this motion, and I absolutely want to support Tom Wolfe for this and let people know that I've heard the community, I've heard police officers. But going forward, I would like to advocate for a more transparent process where we can at least test people's values, whether or not they're people of color or white folks on issues of race equity in police. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Dennehy. Any other member of council wish to speak on this item? Councilmember Simpson?
Thank you, Council President. So, we have, we have an amazing candidate for our police force. And listening to the, to the folks in the audience and other members of the council, I'm very supportive of the candidate we do have. I have one caveat. I would like the process reviewed by our race equity advisory committee to ensure that we're not missing a step. And because, since that hasn't been done in a public forum, I think that that's something that we should do before we make a permanent decision. And that, that gives the community a little more time to talk into this. I'm completely in favor of keeping our, keeping Captain Wolfe as our, as our interim chief. And in lieu of, in lieu of approval from the, from the race equity advisory committee, I think that the interim status is sufficient at this time. And I too have talked to members of our, our police force and members of our community about this very issue. And it's something that we should strongly consider. Our candidate is incredibly qualified and has the, has the support of the rank and file. That's important. Also has the support of the community. But I'd still like to make sure that we, that we've not missed a step in any of this process and that we make it, make the best decision in the most timely manner. We can approve, we can approve him tonight and keep him in as the interim chief and give the time for our race equity committee to do a review and ensure we haven't made a mistake. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilmember Simpson. Next, Councilmember Goodnow.
So, I wanna thanks Councilmember Dennehy for his comments. I thought those were fantastic. I, I, I support this too. I, I have concerns of, again, I think Tom Wolfe is very qualified. I have concerns about trying to bring somebody in at this point. You know, I've mentioned before that I've worked in HR, so we may get down to three candidates. And we may plan to do interviews, and one of them backs out at that point. I mean, it's just a really tough situation, and then we're in this sort of turmoil. You know, and the, the police force is, has enough going on right now with, you know, bringing in these, the new guidance from Olympia and without having to worry about, you know, other big, other big changes happening. I agree with several folks about, just wish the process was better. I, my maybe advice for the mayor would be to, when you have a internal candidate, go through some of the same motions, maybe do some, however we would choose somebody like that, go through those same interviews, get him, get somebody in front of, you know, a group interview or things like that just to maybe give you the assurance that this is the right, right person. I will say that we, maybe race equity didn't formally discuss this, but Councilmember Dennehy and Dogs and myself are on that committee along with Fay Fleminster, who I believe has come out in support of Captain Wolfe, interim chief Wolfe. And Mr. Riley is also on the race equity advisor committee. So, there's a sort of a majority there, I think. So, yeah, I, I would, I would support us bringing interim chief Wolfe in as our new. Uh, yeah, I, I would, um, I would support us bringing, uh, interim chief Wolf in, uh, as our new, uh, permanent, uh, chief.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Councilmember Goodnow. Any, any other council discussion on this item? For the amended motion, rather. Not seeing any, uh, so my, my thoughts on it are, gosh, these are hard decisions. Um, the intent, I, I believe, in, in my opinion at least, uh, is to really try to. Get in front of something that I see as a systemic issue with hiring, uh. Especially the, the most important, um. Most important roles in our city leadership, you know, it's the city leadership team, it's the directors, it's the chief of police, it's the. Fire chief, um, these are really important positions, and I think that it's good practice to. To go outside and see what's out there so that we get the best qualified candidate we can. Um. I do, uh, respect the, the mayor's, uh. Right to just appoint, you know, who he sees fit, and, and I do appreciate his willingness to. Excuse me, his willingness to, uh, promote within, I think that's, uh, also a good thing. It's just, I think we need to better strike a balance, uh, between those, because there have been a, a lot of. Um, appointments without an open, transparent process for a lot of important positions. Um, but the, the discussions tonight, I think, have, have definitely changed my viewpoint on it. Um, I think, I think the, the major one is the. How the rest of the police department views, uh, how the, the council's kind of tearing their chief apart or their interim chief apart. Um, and it's not about, definitely not about, uh, Chief Wolf. Um, he is very qualified, we've said that many times. Um, and so I, I, I just can't really justify at this point. Just to prove a point, I guess, uh, to the mayor, uh, to be quite honest, that we need open, transparent processes. I, I, I can't really justify putting the, the police force through this tough time as well as, uh. All the other things that are coming their way right now. Um, I think the message was heard, and I don't think the intent was ever to hire a token person of color. I think that's, uh. I think what, what we really wanted was really stout, uh, robust discussion on how we hire. And, and really, uh, for me, it's mostly about the. The workforce, uh, workforce diversity plan. And, and keeping the, the city accountable to that and continuing to look outside. Just for the chance of, of hiring someone who's just as qualified and a person of color. I think it's really tough, the, the, what we've got ourselves into as far as, uh. What am I trying to say? It, it's really hard to change a workforce overnight and, and have them represent the community that they represent. Um, and so anything that we can do as a council and as an administration to, to help improve that. Uh, it's gonna pay dividends in the long run. Um, so, yeah, uh, thank you, everyone, for the really thoughtful discussion, the community members. There were some, uh, really great comments in there, and I appreciate it. Um, so with that, I'm gonna call for the question on this amended motion.
Correct. So this is the substitute, um, this is Leslie, our councilman, Vice President Dowd's. Uh, substitute of the pending motion to read. Move to approve the extension of the provisional appointment of Chief of Police Thomas Wolf. And request the mayor to make the regular appointment of Thomas Wolf as chief of police. Um, so we're just voting on the actual substitution itself first. Uh, are we ready? Uh, Dennehy.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Simpson.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Dawes.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We have five yeses and one no. Now we will vote on the motion as amended, so that would be to approve the extension of the provisional appointment. Of Chief Police, Chief of Police Thomas Wolf and request the mayor to make the regular appointment. Of Thomas Wolf as the chief of police. Councilmember Goodnow.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Dawes.
Yes.
Dennehy.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.